The full school district of Wailega Fremont Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting order on Monday, March ninth, two thousand and fifteen at thirty PM in the Wailega Fremont Middle School INC. Number two, we'll call this after the form, please.
Neil Murphy?
Here.
Sam Smith.
Two.
Debbie Murphy?
Here.
Debbie Burdon?
Here.
Chris Bucksterry?
Here.
Number three, we need a proper. The four, board policy and in-service.
Board members is referenced at our February committee meeting and then again at the end of the month in February. We've navigated through the five hundred series. Today you have the cumulative policies, there was ten of them that the board has made some recommendations for adjustments to language. There are no other questions to the policies in which we've vetted out. We'd love to have them approved at the end of the month at our March board meeting. Five hundred would be done.
I did have one question about the FMLA policy.
Okay.
You know, I think originally I had recommended that you look into the different types of years and I see it's still calendar year, so I was just wondering if you, you know, did look at those options and sorry Debbie, what's the policy?
That's the FMLA policy.
Okay.
Five, three, two point two.
And the eligibility part? Eligibility?
It's the very first paragraph, it's the last sentence. The district administers its federal and Wisconsin state family medical leave policy on a calendar year basis. And the only reason why I ask is, you know, it's the easiest way to administer a policy because now January one, it just starts all over.
Right.
But it's also the way that people can stack time off. So like if somebody has, let's just say, somebody has a baby in October, they can get twelve weeks off in two thousand and fifteen and then another twelve weeks off in two thousand and sixteen.
Correct.
So, or, you know, I'm not saying not necessarily October.
Sure, right, from wherever that point is where they.
Yeah.
I've got that.
So it's, it's just one of those things that I personally, you know, like at the base, we do a rolling, so.
So from the point in which they have their first occurrence, that's where their calendar year starts then?
Yeah, it's actually kind of weird because it actually goes backwards, but, but the whole point of it is that those people can't stack it. And so it's just, it's a little bit of a protection so that you're not out of an employee for.
Could have you interpreted that as October one, somebody has an occurrence, but that's when the calendar year starts? Maybe, maybe that.
Calendar year is calendar year.
Calendar year, calendar year.
Calendar year is calendar year.
That'd be correct if I had a little school.
Nope. You can't, no, there's, there's four different, it's rolling, calendar year, when you first, I can't remember the other two, what they're called exactly, I mean, I could look them up, but you can't interpret them differently. They are what they are.
They're not school calendar.
No. One of them, you know, maybe one of the little ones is physical, I don't know. But, I mean, it's just something that.
If somebody wanted to, they could play that game.
Yeah.
With it.
Yeah, maybe, you know.
Couldn't they play that at any time though? If it wasn't the calendar year, say you started July first, they could still do the same thing at the end of July?
Uh, not with a rolling, with a rolling, it's completely based off of who tests. So there's no way to stack it unless, you know, I mean certainly there's people who would.
Or it's a year after your major.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, we can definitely make that adjustment if the board does that.
Right, but any issues with that?
You know, not really. There's, we do experience an FMLA request, you know, on various occurrences. People acknowledge, but they use it as appropriate, and I don't think that it's been misused.
No.
I think the events are very much within warranty, it's more than the fact that we're going to.
Yeah.
But that's not to say that we may not have to do that.
And it, and it could happen, and this is just kind of a protection against the FMLA as well. So, and, you know, and it kind of puts you in a pickle if you've got somebody who's doing exactly what they're entitled to do and it's, you know, you're out twenty-four weeks. Or if it was a military thing, you've got fifty-two weeks.
Right.
It's kind of six weeks for military, so.
The board's comfortable with changing the calendar to rolling since implemented and have it first for the end of the month? Would Donald, how does that affect the tracking of it? Each individual person that has an occurrence who just has to maintain that record of?
We just have to keep track of it, and we do anyways as far as payroll purposes.
Right.
We, we schedule, yeah, schedule that time off and whatever it is, so he and I just know when they're taking it as, all that concern.
Yeah, like I have a spreadsheet too, the data, and, you know, it counts back on how many hours they have left and things like that.
Yeah.
Mia, I'm, I'm not saying that you necessarily should, I'm just saying that I think it's an excellent thing that you should look into and just know that you're saying that this is the way we're going to do it and we understand the practical issues of calendar.
Right. Well, now's the time to make the change. Do it now, it's there.
Do you bounce that?
To do it rolling.
So what would you change? What would you recommend changing?
I just want to make sure that that language is okay. If you all suddenly say rolling, people understand that. That is probably a purpose that makes sense.
Yeah, I think I said I kept it before and I should have looked it up before.
No, we look into it soon before the next meeting and just make sure that we understand that it's the first one.
Yeah, you know, I've got all the stuff that work, at work, and so I, you know, I can talk over with you guys.
Sure.
You know, these are the, these are the pros, these are the cons, you know.
Everybody comfortable with that? And then we'll see if at one time we all know what changes. Recognize that, and we can do it right before we recognize that again.
It's likely to be a certain encourage two readings of our policy. I know we've got a way to make sure that we should go back. Public reading of our policy.
Any others within the five hundred series that the board has threatened time revisiting? Do you have any else on that? Not, we will look for verbiage that reflects rolling and implement that right now. See that at the end of the month? Number five, five curriculum improvement through an alter, five A, two thousand and fifteen, sixteen elementary student configuration. This evening, Mr. Nowak is going to take the board through a bullet point. The document, the most current and up to date is that you're down in that black and white format, we'll shoot it up behind you as well. The document you received in your materials has the majority of the, of the presentation, but there are some additional bullet points that we'll to communicate out the thought of what we're talking about tonight. Can I just jump here and we'll?
So what we're looking at is a snapshot, in other words, where we are today, with our, you know, with our elementary population, you know, but looking forward to the next school. So I'll be talking in terms of twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen school year as a little. Part of, part of the presentation, we focusing on what's called SAGE or Student Achievement Guarantee Education. I know this is.
I could with light switches.
So, and you'll hear more about that as, as we do. So the next slide talks a little bit about what SAGE is. All, we have students at the Wailega campus that are eligible for, that are on free radio, have free reuse lunch, so there are some of the low income K three children, and this affects the Wailega campus. We have some eligible children at the Fremont, but their, their numbers don't come. The Wailega campus is the only favorite campus that we have. But, so obviously the Fed, the government pays, will pay monies for each and every one of the low income children in K three. The, part of, one of the biggest things that people understand about SAGE is you cannot have a greater than eighteen to one student teacher ratio. So at no time during the course of a school year can there, let's say for example, in any of our kindergarten to third grade classes here at Wailega, have a greater teacher and student ratio of eighteen to one. If you do go over that, that really is ineligible for that SAGE funding. So if you happen to have ten kids in there who are low, low income students, that would affect the grade. If you have one, it might not be, really be as quite as that. And then they also require full compliance in multi-age classroom. At Wailega, we have one multi-age classroom, which is the second, third grade, so third grade, they're both in SAGE and then you have to maintain eighteen to longer less ratio to teach a child even though it's two different grade levels. You could go three, four, in other words, you could have fourth graders with third graders, the third graders are the only ones involved in the SAGE program, however, that classroom would have to maintain eighteen to one teacher ratio. And then essentially Wailega Elementary receives the cost of a, of a teacher. In other words, our SAGE funding is about what it costs the district to hire or keep one teacher for the year. And again, now we'll get into, we'll just be looking at the next few years. And as I said earlier, I'll be speaking of the, you know, fifteen, sixteen school years as I go, but what we'll look at is where the elementary numbers, student numbers seem to lie in the next couple of years. Obviously, there could be variability, who moves in, who moves out, but. A little bit of history here from our four K to five K, and I, I hope I can help you to understand this. I look back as far as I could find in records, from what I saw, we had four K here in the beginning of two thousand nine, two thousand ten. If there was, if there was before that, I'm not aware of it. But what you're seeing here is on the four K, let's look at the top left, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we had fifty students in four K that year. The next year, when those children became kindergartners, there were sixty-two in the kindergarten. So there were twelve more K five K than there were four K. So then in twenty ten, eleven, we had forty-six, and we had forty-six enrolled in five K the next year. Eleven, twelve, forty-seven, we went up by nine. And you can read the rest of it. Right now, we have forty-four children in, in four K. If history proves, you know, solid, we should average five to six students will come to Wailega School District next year. Now, we don't know where they'll go, whether they'll go to Fremont or Wailega. Typically, there are some parents who just choose not to not send a four-year-old kindergarten child to school. Some, I believe, are in, talking with Mrs. Zillo, some are in St. Pete's easily for their, their early childhood or whatever program, and apparently they come over here. I didn't want to call there and ask because I, how many kids they had, because I just didn't want to, I feared as though we're looking to take kids from their school, so I don't know, I, I don't have an idea of what the numbers would be. As you can see, it ranges from twelve to zero. And we've never had a negative, I guess that's probably the biggest thing to look at.
Isn't having twelve, forty-seven, forty-six, isn't that nice?
Where are we at here? I'm sorry. Where are we? Yeah, you have to go over and down.
Got you.
My arrows aren't that good on there, you can see that, and, yeah. And it didn't come through, I can do a little, yeah. Really what we're listing is we seem to pick up students over the summer who most likely are in our district already, not a lot of some, well, probably. All right, and this is what our projec, if we were to start a school today, this is what our numbers would look like. Wailega would have in fifth grade twenty-four and twenty-three. You see the twenty-four in parentheses, you're going to have a request from a parent who has a child in Wailega, in Fremont, fourth grade right now, who during the summer would like to have that student accepted to fifth grade here in Wailega. Reason being, child is pretty advanced and would like to capitalize, had the child be able to take sixth, perhaps seventh grade mathematics, it's a different talent of student. So then you see Fremont, there's fourteen children, but really there's thirteen in fifth grade. So the, the smaller in parentheses are numbers that we can expect, the ones that are, the larger numbers are the ones that are in place today. So fourth grade, you can see that's that group of forty-six we had at one time, nineteen and eighteen, Fremont has thirteen, third grade, there'd be two section, the asterisks, that's where the SAGE comes in. And the most we can have is eighteen, so if you see third grade over in Wailega, there's the, the parentheses, by the way, next to the grade level, that's how many teachers are currently teaching that grade. So there are two and a half teachers in third and second grade at Wailega, you know, every now today. So you can see if we had eighteen students in third grade in two classes, there'd be nine students who would need a teacher. In second grade, eighteen, eighteen, now we have twelve students who need a teacher. First grade, eighteen, eighteen, I was, a mom who is definitely registering a student who's going to be in first grade next year, she wanted to come and register already, they live in, live in the district voucher, and I am one hundred percent certain that that kindergarten is going to be here in Wailega next year. So really, we have, for all practical purposes, fourteen in that last kindergarten classroom. I look at the, at the students in our four K right now, where they fit boundary wise. Today, we have, if we opened up the doors and it was September first, we have, you can see ten, 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 and thirteen in Fremont. Now, I added the one point, or the five point six kids, so that would give us twelve, twelve, and one point six children in that other class. So that's why the, again, those in parentheses are the numbers, I think, that we can expect to have in our district on September first. Those, you know, the larger numbers are the ones that are current. And the SAGE conversation, those three that are aster, that have asterisks, buy them on the Wailega site, that's where the SAGE conversation is going to come in, because you, remember, you can only have eighteen to one maximum teacher, student, or student teacher ratio. This is, we talked about this slide just a few minutes ago, we're going to be looking at those, those with the asterisk, how, given their, the way Wailega, we have no troubles with the Fremont teachers and so on and so forth, there's one section there, but what we're going to have to look at is what would we want to do with those numbers in the red? What, what's going to be best for most child, children's education? One thing we, potential is hire an additional teacher at Wailega, which would give us three sections in first, second, and third grade. Those are actually pretty, pretty nice looking numbers if you're a student of those classes. The third grade would have forty, would have fifteen children in each class, second grade, obviously, I mean, you can read for yourself, I probably don't have to read them for you. First grade would have seventeen instead of sixteen, as I mentioned earlier, the, the mom that I spoke with was definitely coming here, and then up on top in the fifth grade there's a student who, the mother is already made the application to have that child move from Fremont to Wailega over the summer. Another option would be take the third through fifth, that's free, third through fifth grade Fremont children and bring them to the Wailega campus and hire an additional teacher. The reason I threw this up there is it just makes the numbers a little bit small. As you remember, Fremont had thirteen children, and we're looking at twenty-four in Wailega. So this would just even that out quite a bit, twenty twenty, twenty-one, seventeen. We'd have an additional classroom in, in, in third grade, because of the third grade class moving over here. I'm, I'm not saying this is what I'm recommending, just throw it up there so that you have something to look at. One of the reasons I don't know that I'd be in favor of this, is you can see already, that second grade group, let's say we did this for two years, once they come up, they would begin to throw the numbers off again for SAGE on the Wailega campus, so that might not be the best thing. The one thing that would be beneficial, we, those students who are on free reuse lunch, who are in Fremont coming to Wailega, we would now receive funding for them. I don't know the numbers of those children, but, but, you know, if there's ten, let's say, that, again.
What does that do for Fremont's current enrollment and that projected enrollment?
I'm sorry, what, what do you?
What would that do to Fremont's current enrollment to project?
I'm, I'm not following, I'm not.
You're, you're going to be bringing Fremont children in third through the fifth year?
If, well, if, yeah.
So what is there now? And what would?
Oh, in the total?
Yeah.
Oh!
What is there now?
There's about a hundred and seventy students there, we have all the four K over there.
One seventy now?
Approximately. And then, well, we have thirteen, thirteen, and I believe there are twelve, seven, twenty-six, thirty, forty-eight. So you have a hundred and thirty.
So that option may cause forty-eight children coming to Fremont.
Approximately, yeah. Yep. Yep. Another option, Fremont have a fourth and fifth grade multi-age classroom there, which would mean we'd reassign one of the Fremont staff members over here to Wailega, which would mean we wouldn't have to hire a teacher. So that would give us, the Wailega side, numbers really wouldn't change much at all, we'd have that twenty-four in that second, fifth grade class. However, we see the fifth grade and the fourth grade in Fremont, we'd be moving that fourth graders over, and that classroom would have really thirteen and thirteen, so there'd be twenty-six students in that classroom. Half of it would be fifth graders and half of it would be fourth graders, and as I said, that teacher would just be reassigned over here, so we wouldn't be hiring another teacher. The, probably the biggest drawback with this, as I see it, is not every student is, that's what I said, ready to be in a multi-age classroom as maybe their neighbor. When you have a greater, you know, a greater number of students to pull from, you can find some of those students who are a little bit more independent learners, self-motivated, oftentimes those are the students that'll be in a multi-age classroom. The students who are reluctant learners, that's, that's can be a much more difficult environment for them, because trying to do the teachers teaching two curriculums, you know, things like that, it, it has the potential to make it a little bit more difficult. In this case, I mean, the children or parents don't have a choice, they're either in the fourth, fifth grade multi-age classroom, or, I don't know, maybe they make another decision, I'm not sure what that might be. That, that is probably one of the biggest drawbacks of this option. Option four, bring the Fremont fourth and fifth graders to Wailega and then reassign to staff. So what, if you look at the fifth grade, there would be, I, I, these numbers, I just sort of threw out, they're a nice size classroom, would be twenty-four and twenty-four, and there'd be twelve additional students. And why I have thirteen there, I'm not sure, I think as I updated, I probably, I know why, because I had twenty-five and twenty-four, and then I moved one over and I forgot to move that twelve to thirteen. So there, look at it's thirteen, and then in the fourth grade, instead of having, let's be have seventeen or something like that, I'm just looking at mine here, eighteen and nineteen, we got twenty-two and twenty-one, which are third grade, still pretty nice numbers. And certainly we would be able to locate eight third graders out of the two campuses, excuse me, eight fourth graders, who would probably be good candidates for the multi-age classroom. I wouldn't be surprised if the student who, the mother's already wants a child to come over, certainly a good self-starter and probably be a logical candidate for that, not someone like that. In this instance, there is no staff that needs to be hired, because two staff would be reassigned here, and the staff, the staff member who doesn't teach the multi-age classroom would, would be assigned to either third or second grade. Doesn't necessarily mean a staff member from Fremont would be in the multi-age classroom. We have six people who would be able to teach that class, and just have to talk with the staff and see who's most interested in, in teaching it. Frankly, all six of them would be capable of doing it.
So the other option would move approximately forty-eight students from Fremont to Wailega?
Yeah, thirteen, thirteen, and twelve.
And this option moves?
Twenty-six. That's it, twenty-six, thirty-six, I actually think thirty-six is the first one, is the larger option. Thirteen, thirteen, and twelve. So twenty-six and twelve.
First number is thirty-six.
Yeah, okay, number thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Yep.
On option two, and now we're at twenty-six, maybe on option four.
Four.
Is there a rumor of our business?
Well, we'll get to that in the phone call, thank you for leading me through that. Okay, so now we're going to look at Wailega. I put up there multi, well, it's not a misnomer, not multi, multi-age, okay. So basically, if we did not hire and said we wanted to just maintain Wailega staffing the way it is, and we're not going to hire, what we'd be looking at is obviously fifth and fourth grade, we know those numbers. Third grade, we have nine students beyond, you know, to where we're at our maximum. Second grade, twelve, and first grade, fourteen. So what we'd have to do is move eight, well, we'd have to move twelve second graders into multi-age classrooms. That goes again to the question, it's thirty-six, forty, fifty, out of that number of students, are we managing to, or are we educating? Because now all of a sudden, we're taking a very large percentage of our students and placing them in a multi-age classroom. Right now, I think we have, how many is there? Something like eight in that classroom. But again, to not do anything with Wailega, to not hire, or to not do any of the other options, if, if, we don't have, first of all, we hardly have any room, if any, if one or two kids move in, we're already in non-compliance with SAGE, because we've got third grade with eighteen and eighteen, second grade eighteen and eighteen. I put seventeen in the first, in the first grade, because that way I could at least put a multi-age classroom together that already had eighteen. Because you never know, the student that moves in, I, it would be, in my estimation, a little risky to say, okay, this student needs to go in a multi-age classroom, and clearly they're not a child who, who will function better in that. But in most scenarios, we have about room for one student who's going to move into the district. Based on my past year, we had kids moving in left and right. Not to say they won't move out, some of them, but I would be amazed if we went with this and did not have some issues, because they don't all move in at, you know, they move in at different grade levels. So, I've got to get my, I am.
Bart's talking here.
These are just slides that we, we looked at these already. Probably, in my estimation, I got to put them together, because I thought they might be the two that the board would want to take the most look at. The piece on the left just says, okay, if you're going to add a teacher, really, we don't have a lot to think about. We can fit kids in there pretty well, we have room in case anybody move in, hopefully more fourth graders move in than anything else, because that would be a classroom that would be able to handle pretty well. The one in red is the, moving the fourth and fifth grades to Wailega. Keep in mind, as I said earlier, this is, what I, I look at is just a two-year project if we were to do something like that. This, in my mind, that doesn't mean that that would be a forever and ever situation that the fourth and fifth grade are always at Wailega, because you can see they've got a group of eighteen coming in, so you never know exactly how the numbers are going to fluctuate. But what we would have is two classes probably of twenty-four, thirteen and eight, and then two classes of fourth grade, and you can see how the rest plays out. We're still good-looking classrooms, room though for people, for students to move in. And they move in during the course of the year. This goes to Mr. Markey's question about space. I saw Mr. Black and Mr. Schrader toured buildings to see, can we bring those students over here? Third through fifth would be pretty snug, fourth and fifth, we wouldn't, I don't think have any trouble accommodating those, those students in the, in the Wailega campus. We would be borrowing some rooms on the B hallway. What would happen to the space at Fremont? I don't think anything would happen in the immediate future, other than especially in the four K. Last year was my first year here, and there, I don't know, maybe you, I mean, some of you have, have had kids probably in the four K classroom at Fremont, that is one crowded room. If you look back at the first couple of slides, they already had, I think, about six kids in there in four K, so that means thirty each day with the teacher and then the different assistants that are in there. It is really a crowded room. It is really a crowded room. Um, if we had, uh, if the fourth and fifth grade moved over, probably immediately next year, we'd be able to use some of that space to help with four K. Early childhood is in a real small little area where they have their OTPT area. That's a pretty crowded, I mean, when you go in there, like, if I go in there and start the teachers, I'm walking over apparatus to get to, you know, to where the teachers are, you know, just walking in the room. You, it, it's a crowded space, so, um. Then the other thing that would be something that could be looked at at the interim, uh, one of the biggest discussions that seems to come up around Fremont is the fact that the, the office is in an odd location for the building, it's in the middle. Um, if, uh, the board want, uh, were to move the fourth and fifth grade over without a whole lot of trouble, I think we could use that, what is the current third grade classroom as an office space. The third graders would go out to where the fifth graders were, which means we would, you know, the, the front door would be, you know, ten feet or less away from the office, so. So we'd actually have an entrance, uh, the workspace there would be increased, um, uh, the health room, uh, because of the sink and so on and so forth in that classroom. It wouldn't be too difficult to, uh, modify that slightly, but I certainly wouldn't go into the idea of, okay, we're gonna start tearing up, tearing down walls or putting up walls to make permanent structure. But it could still be done, I think, relatively easy with, uh, with accordion walls. And it would be a good experiment to look at to see, okay, uh, in the future, is this what we want? Do we want to add on to Fremont, uh, after, on the third year when kids are coming back, so on and so forth, so. That's, uh, some of the things that would be happening probably with those spaces. Like I said, in the, probably next year, four K E C C would just have greater workspaces, uh, to work with their kids. Probably take a look at the office space, we wouldn't do it right away unless the board's, uh, yes, get that done. And, uh, we just, we feel it's more important to have the entrance, uh, right near the, the office, right near the entrance, which is, yeah. Um, some of the things that, uh, if the fourth and fifth grade came over to, uh, Wai'wiga campus, I, I think we could, uh, expand the music offerings a little bit. Mr. McConnell was very excited about the orf- orchestra, that's those xylophone kinds of, uh, instruments. One of the, uh, as I thought about this, one of the things, uh, I thought about is, uh, he naturally has a prep period right after lunch because the kids go outside. So he, there's just no way for him to have students from eleven-thirty to twelve, so he has lunch at that time. Uh, to me, that would be a nice time that he could take, he's got, so he's got five days a week here. If he has all of the fourth and fifth graders, he could have, and there's a lot of volunteers, I believe, that come in, who'd wanna take one day out of the week to learn how to play the instruments. So his prep would be at just a different time during the day. But I think without a whole lot of effort, we would open up the music program a lot. I, I'm not real schooled on the orf model, but I talked to Mr. McConnell, Carl Orf is a, uh, was a composer from Berlin, I was not from Berlin, but from Germany, and he, uh, created the structure on how to teach music to children. That's, uh, every place I work, um, they use orf instruments and the music teachers, um, like, uh, music, so. Uh, and then another thing he would like to begin, you know, uh, begin looking at, but it isn't in his time right now, that might be another topic for the board, but, uh, a school-wide choir, which might encompass, um, first through fifth grade, or might be looking at an after-school program, a, a volunteer one, when I taught in the faculty, have a school-wide choir, and the kids stay Monday on Fridays after school, parents had to agree that, yeah, that's gonna pick up the kids at a certain time and so on and so forth. But anyway, um, if the fourth and fifth graders are here, I think that would give him a better opportunity for some of those things. He talked about a troubled choir, um, that's something he'd like to do. I really think, um, that getting something like this going, Mr. McConnell's very energetic, uh, I mean, he really wants to make his mark, uh, he seems to work very collaboratively with the Mrs. Root now. Uh, I think this might have some really nice, uh, effects for the middle school and fifth and, uh, high school, giving kids interest in something. For physical education and art, it doesn't really have much of an effect. Mr. T is gonna teach all the, uh, all the classes, uh, he wouldn't have to hire another teacher. I think it's just, uh, maybe somebody teaching a class or something in Wai'wiga that they usually talk to. So really, the music would probably be the one that would have the biggest effect. Collaboration for staff, uh, obviously, uh, it would give the fourth and fifth grade, uh, staffs, uh, more of an opportunity to meet and work with each other. Um, all six of the staff are outstanding teachers, all six are. And I think that, uh, you know, if they have a chance to get together more, the synergy between them, uh, has the potential to be improved. Uh, as it is now, it's, I mean, they, they can collaborate, but it's somewhat limited. It's not, hallway conversations or recess and lunch conversation. If you ever hear of Wai'wiga, you'll see that, like, the different groups will eat together. And so you know there's a lot of planning and just, uh, sharing of ideas that goes on at that time of the day. Uh, transition to middle school, uh, might be a little easier for some students. Something that would help, the RTI scheduling, so that's our response to intervention. Um, bringing, uh, the fourth and fifth grade here would have a, a benefit in that regard. It would be a little less busy, if you will, for Mrs. Lower and allow her to, uh, to spend more time either doing, uh, records, uh, giving probes or other, probe is just a, a real quick assessment. Uh, I know those things take a lot of time. And then the other thing that, that does occur, um, high school promotional things like egg. Yeah, there, about a week ago, they had the animal, um, zoo or whatever. The Fremont kids, uh, don't always get to go, uh, uh, get involved in those because they'll just have them on here and the kids will just walk over and do some of this. Some of the mentoring, um, things like that occur more naturally because we're all in this campus. Freshmen don't have a way to drive to Fremont, uh, things like that. High school kids do, I, I, I don't know if it's the object that turns them on or, uh, whatnot, so, some of those things. Uh, and then the other thing is, you know, we could, uh, it's almost in my estimation, at least in my role, maybe not everybody else's, it'd be almost impossible to say, well, let's wait until June or July and take a look at what the numbers are. Because we need to get our, we are already going to begin, ready to be getting a fourth card, a quarter, setting up our, our room assignments. The teachers and I take a look at, um, you know, the rosters for each class and decide, okay, who should or shouldn't be with this particular teacher, what students should or shouldn't be with, uh, this particular group of students. In other words, take, we go to great lengths to make sure that, that the classrooms are conducive to learning. So, uh, again, that typically happens, especially when teachers become involved in this too, uh, as far as, uh, trying to, you know, keep a couple of kids in this class, a couple in that class. Um, possibly making the special schedules, and I spoke a little bit ago about the RTI schedules. So I don't know if I, is there another slide we'll start? If there is, I, I, if, if there's going to be questions, can we go back to that, those, the one with a couple of options, right? With, uh, slide thirteen, I was, yeah. Anyway, this is, uh, questions?
A little rachacha. Has it ever been discussed, uh, just keeping the kids blended in four K, there are Wai'wiga and Fremont kids in there, and then they go to Wai'wiga or Fremont? Is there any discussion about Fremont elementary being like four K through first grade for everybody? And then this be second, third, fourth and fifth grade, and all the kids stay blended through their whole career? So they don't start as a group, get split up, come back together as a group, you know? Has it ever been? And give you a lot of flexibility within the grade level to always have equal numbers of these, at those grade levels?
Yeah. I haven't looked at that, uh, it certainly is a possibility.
It was proposed by Dallas, he, um, he was right at the right moment. And it was such, you see turmoil apparent, I think, of, of contracting this.
It was, it was researched, it was presented as, uh, as an idea of creating more of a pre-K to building in Fremont.
Yeah, whatever, the reverse and through second, just he gets mixed the whole, the whole career in the school district. I mean, that's what they're gonna ultimately be with. Friendships start when you're really little. My best friend today was my best friend in kindergarten.
One of the things that, uh, we, I think the board would wanna take a long hard look at, though, on that is our, uh, if you went to a K-two building versus K-three, K-four, K-five, is, uh, the report card would take, um, significantly different. The EPI, um, considers a K-two building much different even to a three building. The K-three building, let's just say, and we left, uh, up to third grade in Fremont, our report card would probably look similar to what it does now for the Fremont building. Like our report card in the Fremont building. So that's just something to think about, uh, I think, I don't just, uh, significantly, I should know that, I don't think significantly. Exceeding that, yeah. So I mean, if we don't have, if, if we don't have a third grade class, I threw that out there, but if you don't have a third grade class, it's just, I'd show that with my.
I have a question. You foresee that, like, Karen thinks your fifth grade's coming up to Wai'wiga, that they might also want their second grader to come up to Wai'wiga?
Yeah, I, well, we have a student that, that was approved to come here this year because the, uh, older sibling became a middle schooler. So that student was a third grader, or is a third grader right now, so they're gonna be in the fourth grade. Uh, yet there was one that did that, um, I, you know, I'm not sure how that would work out, but if you look at this, if we had, we could have a couple of them and, uh, and we could absorb them. First grade would be the, the most difficult, but we probably could absorb them into Wai'wiga if, if we did the fourth and fifth grade over here again for two years. Uh, I think we could, I would, yeah, so. You know, I probably, I, I could take a look to see how many siblings we have. I'll look at the sibling, uh, Mr. Black, and then we can, we can. I'll look that up.
I didn't think that's the PTO in Fremont?
I didn't.
Yes, it's in the, it's in the.
No, no, you're the first group to, to hear about this.
Is there parental presence?
Is there parental presence? I did not survey anyone.
That's our customer.
Yeah, yeah.
I think she should be part of the conversation.
The thing I like about bringing, uh, fourth and fifth grade here is, we don't have that great disparity between twenty-four and twenty-three students in the fifth grade in Wai'wiga, and then the fourteen or fifteen or whatever in Fremont. And I like that, you know, you balance it out a little bit more, so you don't have crazy many students, everybody, you know, about the kind of status.
Well, yeah, and that, and that's why I said, I, I, you, uh, if, I would, my proposal would be for two, and you do what you want, but it would be two years, so that people don't say, oh, you know, this is what you're doing. Because you can see there's a group of eighteen coming up pretty quick, so, um, I don't know.
So then if they came up with fourth grade, then you decided to send them down to sixth?
No, no, this year's fourth, uh, excuse me, next year's fourth and fifth would have their, uh, fourth and fifth grade experience here in Wai'wiga campus. However, next year's surveyors may have fifth grade in Fremont. Next year's third graders.
Next year's third graders, because this would be a two-year process?
Yes, you're right. This year and next year's second graders could possibly be fifth graders or first graders. Because there's that group of eighteen. Yeah, I see.
Mathematically, my mind, tell me if I'm wrong, but just blending everybody from the beginning would eliminate all that today and in the future of faults and kids back and forth and everything. You'd always, you'd either have two or three teachers at every grade level. They, they'd still continue on through the buildings wherever they may be. You wouldn't have, you know, seven or eight number differences like we do this year in fifth grade. Because there'd always be, I mean, there's bigger classes and smaller classes, so, you know, the class of two thousand and thirty may always have three teachers.
Mm-hmm.
Class of two thousand and thirty-three might always just have two.
Yeah.
Because like, kindergarten class is really small, or four K right now.
Yep, this year's four K, next year's kindergarten, uh, right now we've got forty-four.
Five years from now, we.
And, uh, you know.
My wife, well, you have parents, well, that's four K's right in Fremont, there's only seven of four K.
But most of them are. All of them are, except for one year twelve, one year zero.
Yep.
Roughly, roughly five point six, everybody but five point six is going in.
Yep.
Based on incoming outgoing students. But I know their parents.
Well, that, that, that seventeen in first grade, that's a student coming up, is already in, in addition.
If they know they're gonna have to do it in kindergarten, first and second grade, then I'll start riding plus with four K then. They might have more.
That's where I think granting one child with this impression would be helpful.
And you know, something else along those lines, it, you know, um, if you're sending your little four K kid to school where the oldest kids are second or third grade, it doesn't seem quite as, uh, you know, scary for the kid. You know, it's in the house, if there's three, four and fifth graders on the bus, but, you know, they need them. So just don't pass it.
Just don't be on the bus.
Right, the current arrangement is you ride the bus in four, four K in Fremont, and then you never have to ride the bus again. It's in Wai'wiga. That's, that's a current scenario.
Well.
Unless you're a bus rider.
You could be a country kid, and Wai'wiga may always ride the bus.
About your, thinking on that, if we were to do something like that, because there's, there's, you know, aside from four K, which is, is huge in that classroom, it'd be good to be able to do something, uh, there are five classrooms, so if you put kindergarten, you're already taking, taking a ton of those classrooms. You really wouldn't even be able, without adding on to Fremont, to be able to take first grade over there. You know, I mean, the place.
You'd need four sections. You might need up to four sections of.
Oh, we could have four kindergarten sections, so that's all you have. You have, you have the most you can have.
You'd be looking at four A twelve classrooms to support the K through two.
All we could have is four K and K because of the four sections of kindergarten, and there's only five classrooms.
Right, so it may be a space configuration that you have against fair fire pathing.
Yeah, that'd be all we could do, first kindergarten.
In the same building.
And that first kindergarten, four K, and then.
Unless you eliminate the Sage component and then you increase the five sides, uh, in the teens to the twenties, that would be the thing to remediate that.
I agree with Sage. It would be an easier job for everyone here, all of Fremont.
I don't have room for all. Again, I, I, I don't wanna.
But it'd be an easier job to deal with Sage.
Oh, yeah, well, that, we, we give more money too, you know, there's more students count.
Would also be easier to give to the teacher and teacher too.
Let's just do that there.
If we're going to want them.
Oh.
That's the answer. It's a rule that goes down.
Oh, yes, I see what you're saying. Yeah, because if you, if you have to have a, yeah, I'm not just, now that you're, if you, if you have to have kindergarten through fifth, well, because now you've got five children or twenty children, you need to teach them at break.
Well, the intent tonight was to present some options for the board to look at.
It's different than what we're doing now. And, I mean, I'd rather see him cross the bridge now with ideas than, you know, all of a sudden, a Fremont fifth class shows up going into first grade with eight than what you do where there's a three. If you have a teacher for eight in Fremont only, you know, that's older.
That'd be my ideal, a teacher for eight.
Every, for every grade, yeah, right, but, you know.
Not twenty-four kids in fifth grade.
Right, so that's where it could be.
I think twenty-four kids.
Twenty-four, twenty-three and fourteen, we could divide them up three equally, that'd be a lot better.
I think, as I said, looking at two years, uh, the numbers is, uh, different.
With the option being that it's definitely.
Sure, it's not my option.
It's a trial anyway.
Thanks for the heads up.
Yeah, thank you.
I think at the, uh, at our March board meeting, we may put this on the agenda again, just to have maybe just a little further discussion. Um, if there are some questions, as you process through the, uh, materials.
I think at the, at our March board meeting, we may put this on the agenda again, just to have maybe just a little further discussion, um, if there are some questions as you process through the materials tonight, um, for that. But as far as Mr. Noack had mentioned about the planning for next year, that is well underway, and if we're going to do any of the options, we need to communicate effectively with our stakeholders.
Did, did your handout tonight change significantly from the one that was in the packet?
I don't think so, uh, because this last slide here with the arrows that don't come through very well was the last, no, we should be good.
The first one, but, uh, the second handout has two additional slides, slide five and second one, what you're giving tonight, that's the one I would recommend.
IB two thousand and fifteen sixteen student transfer request, bring on elementary to Waiwege.
As Mr. Noack had mentioned, there is a, a student currently a fourth grader at Fremont that is requesting to be part of the Waiwege campus next year for some additional programming, um, within the middle school. And we look to find that support from the board at the end of the month.
Is there an option that a fifth grade teacher could do a sixth grade curriculum, or not?
Uh, yes, that could be an option, if you're doing it for one student, but, um.
I mean, I certainly know myself and students that have been in one grade and doing a textbook a grade ahead of you.
Uh, the problem we might have here, uh, in this particular case, I mentioned earlier, uh, we might, let's say, the teachers be doing, potentially, because in the fourth grade, there are, like every classroom, you know, students have different ability. This student could possibly be doing seventh grade before, and there are actually some others. So, uh, that would be difficult if you were a teacher of fifth grade to do fifth grade, sixth grade potentially, and potentially seventh grade as well. You know, and even with that, if they came here, well, hopefully they will, they won't be in the cla- in the regular classroom all the time, because they would come to the middle school to take some classes as well, so, um, you know, it might take some of the pressure off of that classroom sometimes. But typically, high functioning students like that don't add a lot of pressure to the classroom, they're actually good role models for other students, and they're really willing to help. They really, I think it's a benefit for, uh, many of the kids that they, that this child has been in contact with, this, this child could help other students by helping teaching them things.
IB textbook did waiver requests.
For members, now annually, we look at different textbook series, revisions, adoptions, this year, Candy Martin, who is out ill today, that's what she's done with it. Four K through grade five, English Language Arts, and six twelve, Social Studies are the two textbooks areas in which we're looking at updating. Um, in the past, Candy leads a team of individuals from the various grade levels in the subject matter, and they investigate multiple vendors, multiple textbooks to meet the curriculum standards that are set forth by the state and our local standards as well. Through that process, they'll investigate multiple different types of texts, the end result settling on a text that meets the needs collaboratively, that flows from grade level to grade level to grade level. As in the past, we would look for the board to recognize the did waiver process, so that when they bring forth that recommendation, that they vet it out, that would be the one that the board would be recognized for the potential purchase to our district. They will have different pricing and quotes from other vendors, uh, but when they narrow it down to that one scope of where they want to go, um, we'd like to be able to act on that as appropriate. And that waiver request would be presented at the end of the month at our March meeting. Questions on that proposition, hopefully you've been, heard that conversation before, in previous processes.
Was there, what, four to five vendors?
Typically, it's three to five vendors, uh, Pierce and C D McGraw Hill. The textbook industry is actually starting to narrow, because other companies are buying out each other, and they're getting their arms and wrapping it around greater and greater. Within each of the companies, they're a little more diversified perhaps, um, but that number is typically three to five, depending on the subject matter and the content that you're looking to dive into.
Questions on the textbook did waiver request? Six, finance operations, six A long range facility planning, H Beck building improvements.
I'll tell you what I know so far, I, Kurt and Sandy jump in if they need to, or if you'd like. Two weeks ago, uh, our board meeting, a committee was formed, two days after that committee, we met, uh, the day between there, I made lots and lots of calls. At the committee meeting of February twenty-fifth, there were eight people, ATS and R, Sandy, Kurt, Wes, Scott, Drew, Angie, and Ruben reported it. And there's, there's some notes on it. Before that meeting came about, calls that I made were to people like, um, general contractors, Colin, Myron, Bull, um, there was a couple other ones I didn't want to name, but, um, and also made several calls to architectural firms. What I was trying to do was narrow down whether it's an architectural problem, whether it's a general contractor problem, or whether it's a mechanical contractor problem. I spent some time talking to Ron Erdman, who was our maintenance guy here for eleven years, what he knew of the system, um, what his feelings were on it, I think. ATS and R provided a report to Blaine, uh, at the February twenty-fifth meeting, and the mayor may not have all the topics he goes to go with outside.
It's the updated topic that was on March sixth, we've handed out, and then the forthcoming one has, uh.
There may or may not, there's, there's somewhere there's a report from ATS and R, if people are interested in that. In our packet tonight, there's a report from AC and D, EC and D, EC and D is the company that's been helping us with what I'll call repair beyond in-house buildings. I'd also talked with Charlie from CISA ten, some conversations here, and I've spent some time speaking with Dave Van Spanker, the business manager at CISA six. He steered me, sorry, we're Wisconsin Electric, uh, who steered me to focus on energy, um, I made a tentative plan to focus on energy, uh, and at the February twenty-fifth meeting, that was confirmed, and they showed up. I'll let my date come out here. Focus on energy showed up on March sixth meeting, uh, the second meeting for the committee. Where I'm going with all this is, um, we have choices. You can either get an architectural firm and design our heating system, which then hires a general contractor, but architect helps us with our, our RFP. Then you hire a general contractor, um, and they will hire a mechanical contractor. Or you can do a performance contractor, so the four big choices are architect, general contractor, performance contract, and mechanical contractor. Mechanic, the performance contracts, the biggest, probably one of the states with, uh, Kin Street, Madison, uh, Mario, I talked to New Island, and I've got names everywhere I talk to you. For me to boil this all down, I feel this district could have the best bang for the buck in going forward, talking to mechanical contractors, such as August Winters, who's willing to come here this week, board free, to assess our stuff. Nama, N A M I, Stork, American Mechanical, Adam, who's in Lynn County, uh, I've met several times in conventions in Milwaukee, and we've had talks about mechanical contractors. He's also on a string, we want him this week to come and look at things, uh, to give some assessment for free. Uh, we've been, I've been recommended TG, which is Tweet Garrett by Green Bay, by almost all of these general contractors. Uh, there's, uh, Hurk, Hurkmann, H U R C K, Mann, Green Bay, comes up often, uh, J F Aaron comes up often, uh, so there's five, Winkers, Nama, TG, Hurkmann, and Aaron. Who continually come up through many of the general contractors. August Winters, gentlemen, you know why we go out, they're doing heating at Averture, they have a subcontractor in the minor. And they all agree that the best bang for the buck that the district should, should consider, is hiring contractors, uh, contractor A is gonna give you some ideas, contractor B will give you some ideas, contractor E, C, and then you can go three to five, is my recommendation. They would give you an idea of what priorities and things to do, and what they cost, um, eventually, it's gonna come down to, you know, you've got to pick a contractor based on personalities and, and the path on it. It'll end up being their design bill, uh, they will make the decision that this is the way they would do it, and recommend it, and price accordingly. We're like going through multiple mechanical contractors, I think would be our best thing to do. I have pages and pages of supporting notes, um, and whether the board would like me to go forward on that, or the administration, um, would be the board's decision, or some other direction.
And do all.
Go ahead, I'd like to hear.
Do all of these work with focus on energy?
Absolutely.
And did, you had ever told me, I lost it there.
I did not, but I'm, now the talk to him very clearly, the manual project. The performance contract, I could only, I could add one more thing, performance contracts, um, are somewhat complicated, um, and they take advantage of Act thirty-two, which allows you to exceed the revenue limits for energy conservation targets. So you can tax without permission, you don't have to go to a referendum, you can just say, we're gonna create the taxes, but we're doing it for energy, and Act thirty-two allows us to do that. Where do you want to end?
The, the meetings were, I thought, pretty good, maybe we made some headway and got some ideas. The, the question I had for Wes is when you, when you got this here, does this follow what your recommendation is pretty close, or is this their, their general right now?
What you're referring to there, EC and D.
EC and D. EC and D's.
It does.
It's pretty close, with your different walkthroughs, with different people, would show the same thing, followed AT and S, ATS and Rs.
Right, yep.
You know, ATR, ATS and R, in my opinion, is the article, they have a global looking thing, they do RFPs and then hiring a general contractor. The general contractor is hired for the chemical contractor, EC and D is down on a level in the chemical contractor.
Because the numbers totaled in here are nearly as scary as, uh, first thing of H Beck being fourteen, or whatever, I mean, these are reasonable, you know, and it, we could tie this into that. I just, I just think at the next, next meeting we have, there has to be action on it to maybe go through the stuff.
That isn't a hundred percent complete there, I believe there's missing numbers on control there.
Right, I see that, yep, this boiler is basically not under control, but still, it's nearly a mile away from where we were for prices.
Wes and the, and the focus on energy people, um, did a short tour of the operation, and, you know, I certainly have been aware of many things are lacking, and to put it one word, it's control. The controls to maintain are put in a somewhat obsolete and difficult control, and there's a lot of maintenance that's been missing, um, where dampers are supposed to be automatic, when they're occupied, not occupied, don't work, so they're blocked open twenty-six percent. Those type of things are hurting us energy-wise here. And it's not a huge multi-million dollar problem, it's a control problem. You've got dampers that need to be automatic, they've got to probably be controlled digitally rather than human, you know, now we come back, um, that's the direction. Focus on Energy, I don't think you, people have gotten, I got an update again today on it, um, I was expecting more from Focus on Energy, when I talked to her, um, and I underlined a few things that the email came out was, was expected. Nicole said she was gonna show up with the information needed to move forward with, and create a five-year plan. I'm disappointed, I don't think Focus on Energy is gonna help us with a five-year plan, I think they will, um, help us with getting subsidies or, or kickbacks, rebates, whatever you want to, redwood, on those things that are put in, that, uh, utility companies are, we're all paying in our utility bills to a fund that then gives rebates to people that make good energy choices.
Didn't you say something about, they have a five-year plan?
If you were part of, uh, one of the, was it the performance contracting bid?
Performance contracts require a five or ten-year plan. Performance contracts, contracts to me, are probably not the most cost-effective way of doing this, when you talk to the big one, like Kin Street, um, they wanna do it like Charlie, they wanna come and look at your under equipment for price per square foot, it's pennies per square foot, but it ends up with multiple thousands of dollars, I think around eight, um, is where Charlie was at. So the big performance people wanna come and take a percentage, pennies per square foot to look at it, and then they'll wanna, um, do it, um, real cost plus, they'll hire a contractor, get any seven percent management fees, so there's another layer of management involved, and what you really need to get done. If you, if you can get down to where you can trust a few contractors to give you some numbers, um, pick one that everybody's comfortable with, and go forward, I think is the best bang for the buck. It's a group decision.
So how do you, how do you know which one is the, I mean, this is where I was getting this all.
August Winters is great, I look through the, the assessment, I get mixed up with words, audit, what can we have, inventory, what can we have, or assessment, what do we have, you need to all interchange with words, everybody plays a little bit differently, but those are the three words that keep on entering. They're wanting to look at the, um, for free, most of all, it's one that I talked to personally, and some I got on recording, you know, chasing, I don't know if they're going to let you actually keep chasing. And come to meetings and explain what they do in the value there, um, if that's the direction people are going. If, if that could, you know, and it's always a timing thing, you know, if we have in the next week or two, some more people come and look at it, um, if you wanna start with architects, you wanna start with general contractors, you would. I think we should go and start with mechanical contractors, and I, I'm uncomfortable personally in putting all your eggs in one basket without having at least a few up to that.
Well, our recommendation is to have three to five, uh, general contractors come in.
That's my personal recommendation, and if you ask Kurt and Sandy, because we did not cuddle.
No, we were.
We didn't talk about this at all, did we?
I, I guess I would agree with that, have three to, three would be enough, three or four, whatever, look at it with these boilers and controls to go along with it. Because every, every assessment audit we've had says our boilers are ancient and the controls are, like, outdated.
So one of the things that could be a challenge, and I think the subcommittee could process this through, so that each of the potential contractors are looking at the same bucket of apples. You know, so that when they go in to come up with a solution, they have, let's say, our ATS and R audit, and EC and D audit, so everybody's looking on the same thing as to what the potential solution would be for our campus. You know, if August Winters come in and they say, well, we can do this solution here, and they're looking through their own lens, and then another person comes in and they're looking through their lens, I think you're, you may create some discrepancies as to what they feel important.
Well, we, and we create a, we gotta create the apples, the apples stem that we want fitted on, otherwise.
We're gonna mess again.
We're gonna, we won't be able to decide, because it won't be the same.
Because some, some will have more, some will have less, but one with less will be looked more inviting, because the price may be less than, um, so that, that request for proposal will then, push come to shove, will be a critical document that lays out exactly what solution we're looking for. And then they work.
And it's likely, it's likely to be blended from multiple opinions.
So we're not making a request for proposal to these contractors, we're asking them to come in and do what?
I, I think their term is assess what you have, and their solution, and price it up.
So that's sort of what we talked about way at the beginning, about having somebody come in.
Well, I, I guess I'm comfortable at this point with Wes and Scott bring us from, they were at every meeting, to what, you know, what boilers and controls do need replaced, and let's get that done.
You know, Tweet, Pierre, they're a lot of fellow of them, did you all like them or what?
We, we have them in our study, we have them in this, we have them in Walkers, it's been.
The names that I'm running into, I, I think are equally qualified. EC and D is not authorized for any general contractor, they're more of a control, I'll say.
I've worked with EC and D too.
Smaller repairs, probably not big problems.
Yeah, they go out of control.
Are we talking heating and air? I'm not sure we're on the right page.
Uh, I, I think the heating and air, the question, my. I, I think the heating and air, the question, my, when you're looking at it, this has always been good, better, best. Best would mean everything's new, everybody's got new heating equipment, new friends, wall-to-wall, multi-million, that's it. Somewhere along the line, there's best. Better may or may not improve air conditioning based on whether it's a hundred percent or not a credit figure. And good is just get it sort of last to the ten home. That's my good, my definition of good, better, best. So what's the budget? Do you want to do good and just have comfortable temperatures without the air? You know, there's a lot of window units, they work, they're high-energy vials, they're very expensive to go into central air. The whole grade school is hot water. You go central air there, it's difficult, and I don't think you've got the attic space to do it.
Oh, that's a real.
And that's where I would think these contractors will lift the panel here and there and say, you know, yes, it's doable, but oh, look at this. You know, I'd say, oh, it's not too bad, you know.
So if they all come back, are they all coming back with different things, or are they going to sort of be following?
And just different.
Because if they all come back with different.
If I'm involved, I would like them all to do kind of a good, better, best. That's, that's kind of how I make decisions, you know, based on what can you afford and count on. Do we have enough money to buy better?
Do we have good enough design on or enough information to ask those guys, whoever you guys decide to bid on that? Do you know or not, do you have enough stock?
So. It was our ATS and R report and EC and D assessment and the focus feedback that was generated on more area-type stuff.
So you would give each, the people, that?
The same piece of documents, and that you could say, come up with a good, better, best solution for our district, and this is our information we're presenting you to make your decisions on, as well as a walkthrough. Obviously, they would need to be here to assess the physical condition.
And total cost, right? We can say that.
I, I would be a little bit hesitant to share EC and D's documents with other mechanical contractors. I don't know that you would share August winters with TT Garrett, you know, or Aaron. So I, I might suggest that you take EC and D's on that formula.
Create your own.
And, and, but you go to ATS and R, that's that global picture, it's like, you know, for the best, here's what you can do. That's where, that's where they were at. And I think mechanical contractors, and boy, that's fine if you've got a big enough checkbook, but let's step back to maybe good or better.
So what do you?
But I don't know that I would share EC and D's with other contractors.
Would you straighten me on, or just which one? Which one is?
EC and D's in our book of today, they're the current assistance in our maintenance, I'm saying.
Oh, all right, I got you. And the other one is the global?
They're, they're a large, commercial mechanical contractor.
And the other one is the block?
Yeah, that's the, that's the most global study that we have. That would be a document that I would encourage to give to whoever comes in. Here it is, this is what the engineers that came in and did their walkthrough assessments that, these are the areas that potentially.
And with the updates they gave us, what they pulled out?
Yep, yep, that final line document.
Could we, could we say that this committee meets one last time, and they might have come out with the, and what are we sending to get bid on?
And to who?
And to who? That would be that committee's job at that next meeting to say, this is what we want them to send it off to. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay.
You guys come through that.
So if we're looking to do that before the twenty-third, pick a date so that we can gather and create that plan, and then potentially have it ready for the end of the, end of the month, to say, hey, these are the mechanical contractors that we're providing the information to, or just, or just move it out from there, because ultimately, the board will make the final decision on what option to go. You'd still be gathering information.
But you meet on Wednesday, Neil called out a lot of information in two days last time.
If you'd like me to do it, I can have, I'd like you to have five mechanical contractors scheduled, if you'd like.
I'd have to go through a vague Wednesday one, but I'll be back by June.
I wouldn't invite the five I mentioned, it'd be my suggestion. And EC and D is exactly.
How would you do that, one right after another, or just have them sit down and hear our issues? We got to have, we got to have what we want together for them before they come on.
My, I'm thinking they get ATS and R's book in a walk-through, and then see what they can do. That's my thing.
So are you thinking?
And some are going to say, sorry, not interested, and three, one or two of the three is going to say, oh, yeah, I'm right up our alley, this is what our suggestions will be, you know, there's some costs involved, they'll tell us, you know, some people, if it's a real in-depth bid, I'll call it, they're going to have some fun.
Did you go through them last time?
No.
Say we have to do this.
Yeah, mechanical contractors go along with it all, and I focus on energy, after we saw the first, two-thirds of this conflict, that I've seen enough, I know lots of your deficiencies.
I don't know that they're going to want to come through in one group.
Don't know.
I'm asking that, and they said no.
So the purpose of the meeting would be to?
Put, get it in writing, or written down what we want bid on.
Develop the criteria for the mechanical contractors to.
For the bidding, for the bidding process.
If we ask, I'll pick a name, August winters, show up here, what are we asking them? And it could be that they need to come here first, and then tell them what they can offer.
And then we also would need to break it down into the good, better, best scenario.
Except we tell them, give us good, better, best solutions to what you're going to present us.
I can be Wednesday afternoon or anytime Friday.
I cannot Thursday or Friday, so Wednesday afternoon?
And do you want people in here before then, or get the decision of who we're inviting?
Make the decision on who we're inviting.
One o'clock on?
Want to talk on Wednesday?
Of course, we.
In your office?
Sure, in the conference room, again, the central office.
That's enough.
Do we have time to post this?
Yeah, we'll, at one o'clock, we'll get it up tomorrow morning, and put that item on there that reflects what will be going on.
Now, it wouldn't be impossible if one or more could come to that and offer what, tell us what they offer, you know, in that? Or wait.
We'd have what we're asking.
There's part of me that doesn't even know what we're asking.
I think we got to narrow it down, I think at one more clock, we can hammer it all.
Okay. That's all I have, I've got it written down, one P M. Wednesday.
Starting to close the door on it.
Three eleven, sorry.
One P M. Wednesday?
Yep.
Three eleven fifteen. Thank you.
If you do talk to those guys, I would say, ask them what the timeline would be for when we give them what we want them to bid on to give it back to us.
All of them, the few I've talked to, all people that, because they've worked at school, they know the pressure on the debt. Most anything can get down before next week. So we're early enough for most of them.
April, slot, caller, the contractor's kind of area where he turned the heat off, and he's got to be back out.
Dean, they're in, they know.
You get that, you get that window to make adjustments during that time.
Before that meeting, I will call Manon one tomorrow. Just trying to know what that means, is that okay with anything?
Sure.
Anything else? Sixty W F Athletic Booster Club's whole goal, fitness center locker, and weight and energy.
At our last meeting, we had a discussion on the potential next step to address the proposals that was presented by the Booster Club, for some conceptual planning that would go forward, what would be that next potential step. We dialogueged on the conceptual plans, how that would look. Since then, I talked to Dean from ATS and R about where we're at, what would have to happen to move something forward so that we can have an item in hand to look at, and ultimately make a more educated decision as to what is realistic and within the means and the funds that have been established by the Booster Club. His response to the, to the concept, in essence, somewhat similar to what we started with our first study, is that the groups need to gather and talk about what their priorities are with this project that we may want to accomplish. Okay, if it's the weight room area is the number-one priority, and the locker rooms are the number-two priority, and the training and coaches rooms are number-three priority, you need to determine which one is, has the most weight. All right, then secondly, you need to determine how much funds are available to support the priority list. The third part is then Dean or somebody of like to develop a rendering, and I think that's where we had got to with some of the conceptual ideas that the Booster Club had presented to the board. Now we have something tangible in hand to look at, what this could be, and a price tag to go with it. At that point in time, then, some decisions would have to be made as to how we move forward, if the project could be completely encompassed by Booster Club support, or if we have to look at it from a different lens to accomplish what our priorities have been established. Dean said that he would come down and work with the Booster Club, the board, members of the group, to have that priority meeting, and do a walkthrough and vet out what we want to accomplish, and then put together a rendering, as he did several of them for our other study, for that conceptual idea, along with the price tag, to accommodate what we're looking for, which has been done thus far. Concession with Attorney Gill on the resolution, if, if and when this were to move forward. When we get to that point of a project moving forward, he recommended that a memorandum of understanding would be recognized from the board and the Booster Club, when the exchange funds be established, that, okay, here we go, and we're, we're all in, and we're moving forward to the completion of the project. From our, I guess, a gambit perspective, that's what I have found.
Dean's cost?
Yeah, he, he had said five hundred dollars to come do that priority list and give a rendering and a, an idea for the board, Booster Club, our community to look at.
Now, would we take what I should do?
I think that would be part of that.
Ask him if they were.
That was, when you say Dean, that's the ATS and R.
Yes. Yep. He also went on to talk about, and you alluded to some of the different ways to build structures or remodel structures in the contractor, that proposal that you put forward, that was a design build, or consolidated designs, consolidated builds, and there's the, what I'll call the engineer that designs, and then establishes who the, the Myrins and the Bolts of the world are to come in, and then the third is the contractor management, where the specs are designed, okay, and then the board, like we're doing with the mechanical engineering, go out and present the specs to the Bolts, the Myrins, potentially the consolidated, and then they take the project and run with that, and then they're responsible for the quality, the cost, and ultimately the end construction, they become that project manager. So there's three avenues, the quality of, of work from perspective on oversight, if specs are built from outside, they're developed what we want, if consolidated, develop specs with the design built, they're creating a project with a total number at the end, and they're going to do everything they can do to get what we want for that number, but sometimes the quality suffers. You know, if we're remodeling locker rooms and they put in a locker that'll last five years, and we want a locker that's going to last thirty years, that's where corners can be cut, where if we set the specs with an engineer that designs what we're looking for, we know when we take it to, to a Bolt Myron, as a project manager, we need a locker that's going to last thirty years, and then there's no question. So three different perspectives from a process.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Thomas to do a second. You already gave us sort of an outline of what you're trying to do, right? Can you sort of establish what you want to discuss?
Well, well.
Give us something.
We gave you a letter, and then the, the consolidated thing, we tend to do, is really what we would like to see, but I don't think we broke it down.
I guess what I wanted is, we're not going to do this fixed and this, and then that starts to get a bit bad, um, incorporate it all.
Can I ask a good question, that kind of piggybacked off that, I had it worked down, it kind of relates back to your HVAC stuff, but, you know, with all the things that were in ATS and Rs, about the, you know, science labs and tech, and everything that we need to improve, obviously it's not going to happen this year. Is the HVAC going to be designed? Let's just pretend you put all new HVAC in all the schools. Is it going to be designed somewhat so that, you know, hey, we're thinking about adding on or doing this or that, so you don't have to wipe out everything? You know, I'm assuming they can design it with some kind of.
Right, I think if, if they're knowledgeable that a project may go on, and if we can present conceptual rendering, hey, this is what it's going to look like, the dimensions of the rooms, the August winters of the world are saying, hey, we've got this much square footage to pump in, that they would be conscious of that, if we're at that point of moving forward.
So hopefully, we're kind of working on this at the same time, that, you know.
And I had asked that question before, is that, are we going to put something in, and then all of a sudden, oh my gosh, we're not going to do the science room, and now we've got to take everything else to that? I guess that's sort of my question sort of along with your question.
I think the locker rooms are heated, it's going to quit on that's in the gym, it's going to be taking, quitting on the boys locker inside and the girls locker inside. So if it's a noise problem in the gym, it's one in the locker room. If the locker rooms don't change in square footage, I don't see much of that changing, cost-effectiveness. If you're anticipating add-on, that's probably a different hand order. The most recent discussion is then remodel. That that's going to stay remodeled, or is it going to turn to add-on?
I'm just going to.
The, I'm sorry, the discussion that we had with the people that we ran through that facility down there, is that, just like the rest of the school, that HVAC stuff is not, it's not. So the discussions were to, you know, without getting in-depth, people look at it, were to make that have its own HVAC at the end, you know, if, not knowing that any of this was happening, you know what I mean? Because it is, you know, not a lot of air circulation, and it needs a lot more walk-through to the locker room, it needs some air circulation, you know, so our thoughts were, basically the east end of the high school gym, that way locker rooms, we did a standalone updated HVAC stuff, you know, but obviously, if you guys doing this, it would probably get newer, you know, I don't know how it's going to work together, but I guess it's good timing now, that it is working together, because what's down there is not acceptable, the HVAC's just not as acceptable as before, and walls and everything else.
If the Booster Club's donation is less than two, three hundred thousand dollars, it won't even cover ADAC, high-vac tubes. If the remodeling dollars that are, that I'm hearing is going to remodel the locker rooms into room for maintenance equipment and high-vac, it's not even a part of high-vac.
Well, what if nothing's done down there? Then your proposal that you're getting right now, obviously, you're not going to leave it the way it is.
Why?
I don't know, I, maybe you're leaving an old school the way it is, I, I don't know. I think that's what's been discussed. You know, at your March eleventh meeting, what I'd do is just make your contractors aware that potentially something could happen down there.
That was my point, that's my point.
Yeah, which, I think, what, what do we know that's going to, just make it work?
We can assume that we need proper HVAC for the current locker rooms, weight rooms, and with, it's going to get us real close, even if there were no add-on, small add-on, remodel only, a new unit would certainly handle better than what's happening down there. You know, and, and quite honestly, the, you know, HVAC's one of the problems down there, but it's not our focus, so if the HVAC stays the same and we can remodel the rest, you know, you guys can have the HVAC in and you, you so pleased. You know, the HVAC is not my number-one concern, if they might are, a bad end to the school. Whether that's mechanically functionable, to remodel down there without changing the HVAC, I don't know that, but.
But that's what we should find out.
Yeah, you know, that's, that's, our goal is a better facility with this, however that can happen.
So do we want to bring Dean in?
Some of us in the administration and representative members and our budget renderings, the twelve team dollar market, what's consolidated, we're talking about.
Well, the third, so we're, I mean, we're fine with the money, it's just the, I guess you could say, the priority list, definitely. And I think that, you know, fire department should be involved, maybe a member athletic, a coach or whatever, you know? The people that use it all the time during the day, you know? And develop that list, I think we're probably ninety-nine point nine percent on all the same page, but definitely needs to happen. And if we don't have a problem with the rendering, my question would be, you listed out the three priorities, funds available, rendering. The second and third are somewhat hooked together. We have to present something to our stakeholders of what's going to happen. And, you know, without the rendering, we can't present what's happening and talk intelligently about it. So can that be, obviously, we could pay this five hundred dollars, no problem. Can we switch those two around? In other words, come up with a priority list, if we have that priority list and he does the rendering for five hundred, then can we, that'll give us a number you stated that would roughly.
That would, that would be able to generate a cost, right?
Roughly cost and then we can say, okay, that's in line with what we're thinking. Let's go to our stakeholders, see if this applies to them and then go from there. That's my immediate question to this. But I don't see any problems with that.
I think that's a good point. If Dean just comes in and, again, doesn't know what we're thinking of and comes up with his own plan, and so he should get a clue of what we're thinking.
And then I follow up. So all the talking about the AT and SNR stuff that you've got, seems like the prices are super inflated. Well, by people's opinion, I don't know, you know, is that going to be the same situation here, so it's.
Well, we could tell them to price it today's market. I know the study that was completed was the market two years out, so as close as the market value today.
Sure, I mean, that would be my only, based on the board's comments in the last months of the ATS and R thing, didn't seem like those numbers were realistic. We would like some realistic numbers, you know?
Then you'll point to good, better, best.
Yep, yep, and then, and also, depending on the cost of this project, I don't know how it all works. Again, we talked about this last time, I don't know if you got an answer from whoever you needed to ask, but as far as, because it's not public funds that we're using. But once we give it to you, is it then public funds? So it has to be bid on prevailing wage?
I think we can direct, we can, depending on the total cost of the project, if it exceeds the threshold of prevailing wage bid, then it will, then, my knowledge, it would have to be.
Do you know what that threshold is?
I don't know, I'd be too many of.
I don't think it takes them to succeed in it.
The only reason I ask is because obviously that's a large percentage difference.
Right.
I believe there is a rural community waiver that you can apply for to, so you don't have to do prevailing wage job. If it's under two hundred fifty thousand dollars, so.
Something to consider.
Right. So if he's given us a price, is it prevailing wage price or we could just minus a percentage based on?
Before he does it, do you have to have something still off the debit card? You said we have to fill some form?
All the memorandum of understanding, I guess that's the board's discretion as to how quickly you want to commit to the project beyond where we are right now. If we do that now, then we're, we're moving forward. The first step would be to, you can see what we're in for to complete the project, once the priorities have been developed. To the investment, five hundred dollars.
Yeah, I think.
To do that.
As far as we're concerned, I believe we're comfortable writing a check to the school for five hundred dollars, whoever needs to go to. In good faith that that's what for, is this little project we're talking about. And that's, but that's all we're getting, that's all we're looking for, that step forward to give us something to look at and what's possible. Not looking for you to say, yes, we're going to do it or anything, but I think we don't need a contract to give you five hundred dollars to get something to do.
Would volunteer for set three of these?
Left the March board meeting then, reps motion to address this topic to recognize the preliminary study.
Booster Club donation of five hundred dollars to the school to get those.
If you get that to us, you could have that be on the agenda as well.
Well, would I, would that?
Rec, recognizing the donation, if the donation was made to the school prior to our March board meeting, we could recognize the donation and then the motion could follow to recognize the action that we want to take to bring in Dean and have that priority session to develop.
So that five hundred dollar donation, need to be accompanied with some sort of letter or anything or just a check that's a.
Always a year's due, that would give a conditional donation. The donation is conditioned that it's.
But we don't need to do anything special to be on the agenda or have.
This, Don and I, Doug would establish that donation item when it was received to central office and then.
It's number eight, it's number eight today, so you could put it on then, right? Yeah. I think you'd be covered with a conditional donation.
Yeah, that's fine, we're not, we're not worried about, we're running off with a president like saying. My, I just want to know as far as you guys, you know, if you need a letter saying, we want you to do this and then you can do it, I don't, you know, I mean, that part of it.
What was my suggestion? Conditional donations would take the money for the donation, what's already pinned upon that condition. So you would need to do two steps, make the donation, accept the donation and then make it, make what's going to do for you.
Also, and I just wanted to reiterate, last time I asked if we'd be on the agenda until this is resolved, I guess, if I like the better term. So I'll mention that again, so we stay on there, I guess.
Do you want to work to set the agenda and have that part of it of the board field cooperate and set?
Thank you.
Anything else on B fifteen? Succeed, develop the fifteen, sixteen budget review and planning.
Board members, we wanted to take a few minutes this evening and review our current budget, planning and review process that's currently underway. Over the past couple of months, there's been a lot of chatter about our state budget developing in Madison and what that means in public education. Districts have become very vocal on the potential reduction of funding in which they would be receiving locally. And today I wanted to share with the proposed budget and I've taken the stance and Drew as well is that right now it's proposed, until the dust settles, we don't know. But if the budget from the state were to go through, we would be looking at approximately a hundred and thirty thousand dollars less than in categorical aid to support our education locally. We'd be expected to, as we do, to continue on with programming as we know it, would be our first intent. Present a balanced budget, secondly, to carry out with what we know as far as our educational boondring. But it is presenting a potential shortfall. When the dust settles in Madison, I'm planning on it being exactly where it is. And if there is anything that changes between now and then, it would be a benefit to our district moving forward. Additionally, Drew is going to take the board through in your electronic copy and then there's a hard copy on, on your desk. And Drew spent some time with Bear Financial since he's been started with our district to talk a little bit about what the purpose of spending budgeted funds and what it does to us locally. And when a district doesn't spend funds that have been budgeted, primarily back onto the community and tax levies and rates and so on and so forth. Are you ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So on, on the sheet that all the board members got, the top part where it says the base model, that group represents what we have right now. The highlighted column is this year's budget. And the column to the right is what we are projecting based on today's numbers, as Mr. Black was just saying, with what the Governor Walker's budget is, what our numbers would be for next year. So what I really wanted to, the purpose of sending this to you and to kind of talk about today was what happens with our spending this year for the rest of this year and how it affects our tax rate going forward next year and our state aid. As you can see with the base model, we're looking at a sixty-four thousand dollar surplus, it's basically balanced budget. And if that's actually what we spent and we spent to that amount, then our mill rate for next year would be eight seventeen, projected again. So in the second scenario, the row just below that, if we had a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar surplus at the end of this year, then you can see the column, in the fifteen, sixteen column, our mill rate jumps up to eight thirty-two. By underspending by a quarter of a million. If you go down to the third bar set of rows, if we underspend by half a million, which has been pretty typical the last few years, we've been between a half a million and three quarters of a million and a surplus. Now we're looking at the mill rate going up to eight forty-seven because our state aid keeps decreasing as we underspend. So then, the last row, the last set of columns on the bars is if we actually overspent this year by a hundred and fifty thousand. And if we overspent by a hundred and fifty thousand, our mill rate compared to what the base rate is on the top is only seven cents difference. So the point of this, what I'm trying to illustrate is, we're actually better off as a district to overspend by a little bit than we are to underspend by the same amount or more as far as how our tax levy is concerned. We get more state aid spending up to a certain point for us before it starts really having a larger impact on our tax levies. So one of the things we've kind of struggled with, I think, as a district is it, the district's done a very good job of building a fund balance. Now we've gotten the fund balance to a point where we don't really need to add to it anymore, adding to it would actually be harmful. We need to start getting more of the mentality, in my opinion, that we need to spend what we actually budgeted. Don't go crazy and spend a whole lot extra, but it's okay if we spend a little bit extra to start getting some of these projects done and some of the other expenditures that we know we could have. It actually is going to be better for the taxpayers because it keeps our, it increases our state aid and it keeps the tax levy a little bit more comparatively.
Am I missing something here or wouldn't it be better for the taxpayers if you didn't tax to the max? Where is that part of this equation? Just because we can, doesn't mean we have to.
You're correct, well, you wouldn't have a extra fund balance right now and you'd be no doubt going to referendum with, for no other reason.
But the fund balance is there because of the taxpayers.
And because of the way the budget's been balanced.
So why doesn't some of this benefit go back to the taxpayers?
It is going back to the taxpayers.
Instead of, your calculations are all based on the local taxpayers will pay less if we spend more.
The local taxpayers get a lower tax levy by us spending our budget, correct? That's the way the state has it set up.
But if these other scenarios were the tax levy goes up and we would choose not to tax to the max, we could also have it go back as savings to the local taxpayer.
No, because at this point, at this point, at this point, you.
In the highest price scenario here, in the highest price scenario. The five hundred thousand dollar surplus one, the third one down.
Yep.
That's the one that raises the tax levy up to eight point four seven.
Correct.
That's the legal maximum. But that doesn't mean we couldn't just wake up that day and say, you know what, we don't really need it, we've been underspending. We could save our local taxpayers by saying, let's go down to eight seventeen on that column and under eleven. Is that an option?
Well, it's always an option.
Thank you.
But that also means you never get that money back.
I fully understand.
The state never gives you that money back. So you would end up in a situation like Oshkosh, who did that and then they had a hundred million dollars worth of maintenance that they had the energy efficiency levy for outside the levy to catch back up because they lost sixty cent mill rate by under levying every single year for ten years. So you, you run that aspect as well, I mean, it's, the best, what the state really wants you to do is set your, set where your funding's going to be, your budget's going to be and then spend it. They don't want you to underspend and they really don't want you to overspend, they want you to spend it. And they also want you to spend to what your levying limit is for the last five years. They've made it where you have this, in essence, taxed to the max, otherwise you lose all that money. You're shorting your taxpayers that money that they could have gotten.
I think the historical priority of the school degree, I'm not sure if Wes would agree with me on, but could have been for more maintenance so we, our fund balance and surplus doesn't keep growing as it has or projected. Kicking the can down the road on maintenance, I think, is what's potentially why this is even being discussed.
Well, I know the last several years they haven't kicked the can too far down the road on the maintenance. They've been putting, his budget's been quarter of a million plus over budget the last several years. That's not kicking a whole lot of cans down that way.
But is the priority going to be on the energy savings or just main, just band-aid? There's improvement that could be made that have long-term benefits. And some of them are expensive.
Yep.
I don't think that's been a priority.
And I think the, we all are well aware of this, one of the reasons why our surplus grows is because of our configuration with insurance, hand tie. Yes, there is what we'll call budget surplus that's identified each year or has been. But the majority of our surplus that's been added into fund balance has come in the form of reserves established through our partnership on top. And that, that's what's really flexible.
And I would, would I be wrong in saying it was because the premiums historically now looking back were higher than these?
Higher perhaps, but they follow market trends as to where our directions were pointed to.
So the accumulation because of health savings, was it because the taxes, we put in too much on a high premium or is it because we were so healthy that we didn't spend it? Or some combination thereof?
Little combination of each, but more so the second one. That, let's say, for example, that fifteen thousand dollar family plan, which we have to recognize at the beginning of the year as our maximum ultimate contribution towards it. When the dust settles June thirtieth, only costs eighty-nine hundred, right, for that family that, you know, just, doesn't have to go to have the medical expenses. All that savings year after year after year is what generates that. But we still have to recognize that higher starting point at the beginning. And I think, yeah, Anse and Associates, when they were here two meetings ago, that's one of their initiatives when they come forward and they're start talking about our renewal, to start undercutting that surplus to bring the health insurance reserve back down to a twenty-five to thirty-five percent reserve instead of.
Sixty-five, seventy percent. And if the surplus is drawing, I think it comes down to priority.
And we have some ideas to fulfill those priorities right now?
We've been through it recently with Dan who gifted talent, there's science teachers and some of that kind of stuff that I think our district has not had the background.
Now Drew is going to also share some feedback on building, buddy, as far as the stuff, Daniel, with what the building school budgets are, have been doing thus far and the work that's gone into establishing what we call updated budgets that they need to be building, so go ahead and do with that.
Yes, one of the things I've been doing the last month and a half, two months is getting together with the middle school and high school staff and all the different departments and trying to actually clean up the budgets. And trying to, if, the budgeting process the last few years has been more of a global budget and not necessarily as much getting down into the departmental levels. So it's, it's kind. So it's, it's kind of difficult to know where we can rearrange and better utilize our budget and actually know what we're expending out so we're not seeing as much of a surplus or as much as a variation when you get to this time of year from what our, what we were predicting. Because it's ne, it's been just more of a global look. The, the high school as a whole, this is what we're going to budget and then haven't really been too concerned about the, more of the details. I want to try to get some of the details kind of cleared up a little bit and try to get the departments also into the understanding that when we're giving them a three thousand dollar department budget, we want it spent as well. They, they shouldn't be not spending just because when we're giving them that. We, we build up a cushion in other parts of the budget to make up, to make sure we have room. But we, we've had classroom departments that aren't buying normal equipment that they should be just because they either don't know they have the money, they haven't communicated to them that way, or they've been afraid to spend it, so we haven't been updating some of the small classroom items that they could have been so I'm trying to get them to understand that the budget means we can spend the budget. And budget, when you're giving me the numbers for what you need, I want actual numbers, what you need, not just some of it was, I, I potentially may want this, but I'm going to ask for it because that's what we were told in the past, but then they had no intention of really spending it. So it kind of made the budget as a whole kind of a mishmash mess. So we're trying to kind of, at least at, at the more of the, not the general level, more of the detail levels. I'm trying to kind of get some of that so where I can get the maintenance department, we're upping his budget by thirty thousand dollars going through some of the, more of the detail in the middle school and the high school and seeing where we can rearrange some of that money to start him up with an actual real budget. So three months into the year, he's not already having codes that are over budget, which has typically been happening. So we're trying to make better use of the funds we have and to make sure that the departments are actually being responsible when they're telling us the budget and then when they're spending the budget that they know this is what they're doing.
I have a question. Any note with the elementary teachers?
There, the, the two elementary schools, Mr. Nowak and I talked about it, and they haven't had as big a discrepancy because their budgets are a lot smaller. Their budgets are done a little bit different than the middle school and the high school. It's traditionally been done as more of a per pupil allowance that the buildings have gotten. So the variance for his two budgets in the high school have been within five, ten thousand dollars for the overall budget.
The elementary budget?
Yeah, the elementary budgets.
It'd be interesting-
So, so those aren't as bad. The middle school and the high school, there's been variances of sixty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
It'd be interesting to know how much the elementary teachers spend their own money on those things.
Oh, I'm sure they spend quite a bit of their own money, but whether or not we budget that or not, my wife's an elementary teacher.
You know what?
She, she gets classroom money, but I'm, every time we go to the store, I'm shelling out something for a classroom.
Talking about it, I'll talk to your parents.
That's just how it is. I mean, the, the elementary mindset for the teachers is just much more of that, in my experience.
Isn't that sad? Isn't that sad that we can't give them our own money?
It is, but that's kind of the nature of the beast from, from my experience living with it.
I know. It's, it's the same thing that we pay teachers in middle school and high schools for every activity in, and the elementary teachers don't pay.
If the ma, if the maintenance budget is increasing, is that a separate budget from what I'll call capital improvement? Yes, it's going to cost increasingly more to maintain if we don't do some replacement. Is the replacement in a different budget than maintenance?
The, the way it's been done, yes, because the way it's been done is they wait until this time of year and they look at the budget and say, ooh, we're seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the plus side, let's go three hundred thousand dollars to maintenance for whatever projects they come up with or a bus and maintenance. And that's kind of been the plan. So I, I guess-
Whether it's called maintenance or capital improvement, I guess, there's two lines for that.
There's two lines for it, but not, not knowing how, not knowing how the insurance, not knowing how the insurance plays out kind of has limited what we can actually throw into the capital improvement before, at the beginning of the year.
Are we getting in the budget here?
To be discussion, that, that discussion will have-
That, that will be coming up later.
We might be at, get into the month of April and May and bring that forward depending on our reserves and what we're at.
I mean, this, this all makes sense to me. I understand where he, where he's coming from and, you know, our, for example, the, the insurance this year, what we're, we've talked about it, the last being a hundred and eighty-some thousand in the black right now. I don't think we need to look at that as anything but an opportunity to use it somewhere else and be thankful that we didn't pay a bunch of health care bills. So we've heard repeatedly things that need improving. We didn't have to spend it on health insurance, thankfully. Get some of this stuff done with it.
And we still have a couple of ones left.
And really, that's what I-
It should be spent and we didn't have to spend it on something that's a negative, spend it on a positive.
Because we could get plus.
We will. There will be years where the health insurance is, is paid at the same rate right now and it's going to be red for the hells years.
That's why we have the reserves down. Any further questions?
Thank you, Drew.
On the budget discussion. Our goal to continue to bring items forward and as we have our preliminary budget set, we'll be presenting it, have future conversations on it. Board members, policy, board policy six, six, six addresses the investment protocol of funds that are within our district that are not being utilized other than being an account and drawing interest. And the majority of our funds are part of the local government investment pool, LGIP. That's something we started several years ago as a, as a holding point for when we receive funds from the state. It's a consortium of districts, public entities that use that to gain interest. It's a very secure mechanism and the rate of return within that is a, with a one percent with a low minimum balance. Recently, there's been movement in the market-
It's actually one tenth of a percent.
One tenth of a percent?
Yeah.
One tenth of a percent with the, the market of the, of the balance. Moving forward, there is perhaps another option to look at. Our policy does bring forward the idea that money can be moved within money market accounts to establish better rates of return. And First Merit is offering an increased percent and we'd be looking at developing an account and moving over money is to increase our rate of return. Drew, any other comments on that with the, that process?
There, there would be no difference as far as the collateralization of the funds. It's still collateralized and really, we're going to double our, double the interest into that. It's going to be, it would be even a little bit higher than the American depository management account that we have as well. So it would be my recommendation to remove at least a, a good portion of the money from LGIP into the, into our First Merit money market accounts. And I've been told by Brian Adesso, who is here as well, to keep the LGIP account open. Just because that's how everything is set up for us, our state aid is automatically deposited into that account. It's, it's pretty easy, pretty handy as far as that goes, but to utilize another money market that's able to give us a higher yield.
Where are we now?
We're, uh, we've got just under two million dollars in the LGIP that's getting the tenth of a percent.
LGIP is not First Merit, is your answer?
Correct.
First Merit equal that we're in.
First, First Merit is point two.
Not a bank per se.
What?
The LGIP is a bank?
Yeah, it's a local government investment pool.
If you're, if you're considering moving it to First Merit Bank, I was wondering if it's currently in a bank.
I would assume that's where the LGIP puts it. They're a vehicle for us.
And what is that safety rating compared to First Merit Bank's safety rating?
I don't know that.
And have we checked if there's a First Merit Bank equal that would do even better?
Have I checked if anyone, who, 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 they didn't point two?
Pardon?
I don't know. First Merit actually called me and offered me this. No other banks called me and said, I, we've got a money market with a point two five percent interest rate waiting for you. It, it was double. I've, no, I didn't shop it around at that point.
Where I'm going with this is if one tenth of a percent currently and it's going to go to two tenths of a percent if we go to First Merit. It's an eighteen hundred dollar difference. And if First Merit contacted us, I'm wondering if there's another bank that might even be higher.
There could be. I don't know. I, I know our American deposit where we have the largest amount of our money is at one point, is at point one seven five. So this is higher than where we actually have the bulk of our money. So-
I, I think there's room for improvements. I agree, but I'm not sure this is enough. You know, one point eight million dollars, then you get eighteen hundred dollars a year, and we're looking up it up to an extra eighteen hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars a year. I think that's still pretty disappointing to me. I don't know. I think I would shop it personally.
Do you know other schools that use it or reject? Other schools that use this protocol?
First Merit. I do not know if any other school uses them. I know Brian Adesso said he has five accounts, money market accounts that he uses. Multiple ones that he shifts money into depending on who has the good, good rate or not. But it's going to fluctuate.
When I was on the CISA board, I know they did some shuffling of dollars because of the interest rates. And they also have million dollars or more. They chop it and let them compete and make sizable difference. More than eighteen hundred.
Did he take that out of the RFP process or what?
I can't tell you how exactly. I think he physically just called, I mean, called the two or three banks and said, we got this many dollars, what can you do with this many dollars? We, we got a couple bankers in the room, you know, maybe, maybe they have some inside out.
Well, one of the, and, and I don't know how they're shopping it, one of the, one of the reasons we don't get as high of interest rate with the LGIP as we do with the, with our other money market accounts is we don't have minimums in there. Because that is the account we keep our cash flow up with, which is one reason, my understanding is the other account is closer to that two mark. Obviously, if you want to lock in a larger minimum, yeah, you can probably maybe get that, but then you don't free up any of that. How much money do we not want to have free?
Right.
And access? Which is another thing with the First Merit, they're going to give us two, point two percent. Anything over a hundred thousand, well, that, that account really doesn't get that much. I mean, it, it's gotten to three, four hundred thousand. But if, if we're down to a three, four hundred thousand dollar balance, if that's going to be our low balance, then as we go to shop it around, that bank's going to be saying, well, okay, now you're looking at a three hundred thousand dollar limit, which is going to affect the interest rate as well.
I, I personally cannot support this as a single option.
Other feedback? Shop around? We can take it to market or?
Some things are better. Check about it. You've got other institutions.
As long, as long as it's safe, it, I mean, if it's a safe investment, it makes no sense to not switch. And if you switch, continue to shop around. It's a instant doubling. If it's a safe place to be, it's double what we're getting now and then shop somewhere.
I, I guess I could do safe as we were, well, we still school down the valley. I remember that well.
I don't want to try and make too much money with it.
When our health insurance is through, good luck. Is there a timeline, Drew, on this offer that was out there with the contact that you were working with?
No, this is, this is their rate.
Okay.
So, shop it around now and we'll bring back before the next meeting. How long have they been in the current LGIP?
We created the LGIP when Brian was here, I believe this first year. I believe this year. So, one, two, three, four, four years at the most.
Ten or forty-eight months. I'm not sure that one can make a figure for me. I would, I would shop it.
Where do you go shop something like that to though?
Well, you just pick a couple banks. I mean, personally, I would pick community banks. I wouldn't, you know-
It doesn't need switching.
Um, they're, they're local too. You know, you don't have to mess with big ones like First Merit and US Banks and stuff like that. Personally, that's just my own personal thing. They're the ones that finds all the problems, but then we deal with it. But, uh, and we, I don't, I don't mess with the money at all. So I can't even tell you what we pay. I have no idea. Just even at a point of reference. But, I mean, all you have to do is just make a couple phone calls and just say, where are you paying on a hundred dozen dollar money, you know, probably in a money market.
And I guess the, we can go back and, and take that approach back and have a no minimum because that's, the money that we're talking about here is fluid. It's coming in from the state. We're using that to operate the school. So neither we're pulling that, the painter bills and whatever comes up. So that would be probably the biggest thing. It had to be a, a no minimum requirement with the, I guess, the greatest yield at the end of the day was the dust settles up.
And you're always going to have the limitations of, you know, X number of transactions per month and stuff like that because it's a money market, but-
Any advice there?
Uh, no comment. Group six E, wireless solutions project.
At a February committee meeting, Dwayne Dubia, RIT director, was in and took the board through a priority perspective of where we're at technology-wise within the district. One of the items that we talked about was wireless, wireless solutions and upgrading that within the district. In essence, we're looking at this project being our number two project for the year. If we were to, our next agenda item will be our number one project. If we were to address our number one project in fulfilling that, this would be our next step of that. So we're just saying that wireless would be our number two project moving forward, going down the road here. Any questions in that?
We're not fully in on that.
Nope. No, it's just more of an awareness and follow-up from our meeting on the February committee meeting.
Yep, security camera project.
Okay, security camera project. This would be our priority technology project for this next year. Dwayne had a preliminary walkthrough with a vendor to, to some ideas of the, the vastness of the project that we're looking at. Currently, we have sixteen cameras within our building and we're looking at a substantial upgrade of coverage primarily at our middle school and high school in the hallways and common areas and as well outside of the building. Elementarys as well, need surveillance within. They would have more mods upgraded to the, to the area within doorways, configuration, playground, so on and so forth. What we're asking is to move this project forward is to develop, that request or proposal process to develop a solution which contractors address to upgrade our security cameras from analog to digital and create a, a system that would be efficient and effective to use. So looking for the board's feedback, if there's any reservations of not moving forward with this. But we'd like to take that next step and get the wheels spinning on this and see what type of-
How many cameras are there?
Sixteen right now.
You could monitor them all.
It, the, the high school, middle school, office secretaries all have access to the cameras. It, the high school, middle school, office secretaries all have access to the cameras. The administrators have access at their desks as well. It comes in point of more of, people coming in on the building is obviously a big priority. But if there is like an vandalism or something of that, we can pin it down to track back where it was, when exactly it happened.
Is it within Dubey's ability, expectations that 6E Wireless and 6F Security would have a ballpark number? Are these $10,000 problems or $100,000?
I would go the other way to the higher way.
Three hundred thousand?
No, I, I think it could be met, you know, around that $100,000 mark. Just from the, from the slight investigation that's been going on, we're looking in the.
It sounds like we're looking to discuss it and say yes to something that is wide range of possibilities.
Well, and that's.
Or at least narrow it.
That's, that's why we need to go to the request proposal process, find out what we're dealing with. And it's also well breakdown solutions, high school, middle school, elementary. And then if the project is expansive beyond what we can support, hey, we're going to address high school, middle school first and then.
But the industry must have an idea.
Oh, I'm sure they do. Absolutely.
And it could be shot down before you ever get to an RFP or, oh, that's well within budget. If that would help, great. If I had a range at least, we're dealing with financial. Thank you.
I can give that report back.
6G High School Cafeteria Tables Shared Purca.
The project we'd like to move forward with in the high school cafeteria, we thought briefly in our walkthrough this past fall. The current cafeteria tables are, some are original with the building when they were built in 69. Two others have been replaced. The, I guess the angle that I wanted to present to the board tonight, we are part of a shared purchasing consortium that we pay to be part of. And by being part of that, the consortium oversight vets out all of the potential vendors that support products for this consortium. Thus, they negotiate down the best price solution for the district to consider. Now, we know that our project costs from our preliminary study in the high school would range between $40,000 and $50,000 to bring in new furniture for the cafeteria and the high school. If we're to go to the vendors part of our shared purchasing agreement, I would like the flexibility to say, give us your best solution for our high school configuration. We're going to have free prices and we wouldn't go to the RFP process because it's been vetted out through the shared purchasing consortium. That would be something that we would look to bring forward for more approval between now and June 30th for the end of the year.
Did we approve these tables yet?
No, we did not. We had a discussion about them as we started the investigation part of it. But at some point in time, if they were to prove this process, we'd recognize bid with it for the vendor. That would be the best price and then recognize that as a purchase.
What do you want them to buy?
By the start of next year, that would be our goal.
When you tour the Milwaukee Convention Hall, there are several, several desk people. You can't imagine that we would have pre-competitive.
Would they have the competitive?
The vendors within the shared purchasing would have the competitive bids already negotiated.
It's just that they stop them all.
Right. With that, yeah, then they're giving us their bid. By being part of the consortium, what we keep for best pricing, they would give that.
And if the best price is not part of the consortium, we won't get it. If the best price is not part of the consortium, we won't get it.
We've got to live with that. We can't uncover every stone that they're out there every time on everything. Sometimes you get in programs like that, understanding that they're doing a good job of what they do and you live with it. That's okay. Never going to have the best solution to have every single thing on these agendas.
I guess my priority is we should have these tables yesterday. I mean, I've sat on some of those tables during that meeting.
I'm not going to sit here and undermine the administration's ability to get cafeteria tables.
Nope. We would like to go forward with that and bring forward those items and when identified through that big wave of process, we'd bring forward some solutions to be considered.
8 High School Gym Bathroom Renovation.
Again, another project involved that we're looking at diving into. Last year on the walkthrough, as well, we stopped at the restrooms, the west end of the high school gymnasium. Wes, myself and the admin team in Germany kind of designated this to probably our highest priority of restrooms in the high school. We'd like to start the process to renovate the bathrooms within the existing footprint, gutting them out and building them back with today fixtures and probably more so mechanicals to support that, that upgrade. It is a block wall configuration all around. Extensively changing the footprint will add significant cost. It would interfere with the doors on either side. Doors will right up to the gymnasium to that. Would be our thought to renovate the footprint that is currently established with it. Bids were to come forward that were warranted of the RFP process through the preliminary investigation. We would carry through and communicate with the board as incorporated within that. Knowing that this project will be in phases, you may have one contractor that, that does work. Another contractor that does the fixtures or the, or the tile or maybe the mechanicals part of it. In essence, I'm looking for the support to know that, are we looking at it as a one large project, one contractor all encompassing? Are giving Wes the flexibility to find those vendors, you know, and if the price to carry out that particular phase of it is within our policy to purchase, we do it. If it exceeds it, now we have an RFP process where we would have to establish a protocol.
So you're staying within that $5,000?
Well, between five and 10, three bids between five and $10,000 with the notification of the board. I'm not certain if one particular phase would cost more than $10,000. It very well may. We'll cross the bridge when we start getting to that point. So Wes, do you have any other process procedures?
We're going to get some preliminary numbers right now. I don't know if it's 10 or 20 grand or what it's going to be, so. The partitions, perhaps, that's about it. But the fixtures, the mechanicals, the tile is original to my.
I would fully support pending price and ask Wes whether he wants to be the general contractor or not. That's a goal I found too.
I think you can save some money.
I'm asking whether you would prefer a lump or play general contractor?
You think that's something I can handle?
Always possible.
Anything else?
Seven Personnel Negotiations, seven A Resignations, seven B Hires.
Resignation board, I anticipate having two resignations come forward, a football coach and eighth grade boys' basketball coach. And then as well, I anticipate hires in JV baseball, middle school track and school year that will come forward at the end of March for consent approval.
Do you anticipate in-house replacing?
To be determined. When the posting comes forward.
Sometimes the resignations are already all worked out. My child went from seventh to eighth grade, so I moved from this. Resign here and do it here. I just didn't know if that was happening.
I don't want to speak for someone.
Sometimes it's no.
There's always a chance, but nothing's been presented to me.
Nothing, nothing known.
But this is not formally approved yet.
Got you.
Eighth calendar, future agenda items, 786, the 13th one. January 13th.
23rd. There's five Mondays in the month of March. They only get a week off.
Anything else for calendar and future agenda items? Number nine.
Blue Ford Jared.
By Neil.
Second.
Second by Sandy. All in favor?
Aye.
Phil.
Honestly, it's not catching.